Welcome, everybody. I'd like to introduce the board, mostly and all of us, some of you don't. I'm Dan Hammack, we're with the zoning order appeals, and we have Craig Kuzneskis, Holly Fitzpatrick, and Dennis Wonsi, and our consultant, Paul.
Paul Haverty.
Paul Haverty. And I'd just like to do a little bit of housekeeping so that everybody is aware. Can you hear back there? Is there a speaker back there? If you can't, I'll, that's why I asked, we'll just speak up, so I hope you can hear us. The typical order of a business for a zoning hearing is people who are proposing something will present whatever they have to propose. Anyone who's in favor of that, have a chance to talk. Anyone who has any discussion about they don't like it, have a chance to talk. Before everybody leaves, if you leave your name and number on a paper with us here, we'll let you know of future things that are ongoing. So we call the meeting to order at 7:01, I guess. And that's typically the way it goes. This is a little more complex than just somebody wants to build a garage or add a room onto their home, but it's still, the process is very similar. However, along the theory of we don't know what we don't know, we've not done a comprehensive permit before, so we have a consultant who's paid for by your tax money, and my philosophy on taxes, we send it to Boston. If we can get some of it back here, that's good. So to be sure that we do everything right, and we do it the way it's supposed to be done, and we don't miss anything that would be harmful to the people in the town of Irving, we have a consultant that we've asked to help us out. I think that's all the housekeeping I have. Anything else you want to add? If not, we'll start and ask Brian.
So there was one open question.
Okay.
Member Kuzneskis has just joined us.
Oh, yeah.
Wasn't here for the first meeting, though we took no testimony.
Okay.
So the question was to the applicant if there was any concern about having member Kuzneskis be a participant in these hearings.
Okay.
Was here at the meeting but not part of the zoning board of appeals at the time.
Correct. We are a three-member board, and for a decision from a three-member zoning board must be unanimous decision. If we were a five-member board, which we're not, somebody could dissent. But a three-member board must be unanimous. So currently, we had asked Dennis as the alternate to step forward, he was here for the hearing, Holly and I were here, Craig was here as, he was as an observer. But now he's on the board. So our plan is, I believe, unless the board disagrees, to continue with the three members who started, and Craig's going to sit in. If the need should arise for any one of us, something happens to us, he's sitting in. Then the question would come, does anybody object that he was an observer at the first meeting and not part of the board? I doubt anybody would object, but we try to do these things and anticipate so that we avoid grounds for appeal for whatever we decide, if we can. So that's in full disclosure. Thank you, Brian. That's where we are.
Mr. Chair, can I just make a clarification?
Absolutely.
Because this is a comprehensive permit application, the board only needs to vote by a simple majority, a supermajority is not required.
Okay.
So a two-to-one decision would be a decision in favor of granting.
Okay. So you know, there's an example of things we don't know what we don't know. This is the first comprehensive permit we had, and I'm glad you're here to tell us that. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to ask the people who are proposing this to present whatever you'd like to present.
When you called it to order, did you also, did you have to say anything about it being a public hearing continuation? Do we need that for the record?
We can. We have a timeline here that the, we received the application on September 11th. We had to advertise at least 14 days prior to October 9th, which we did, notify butters, and we opened the public hearing on October 9th. So we opened the public hearing within the timeline that we were given. There is a thing called a notice of safe harbor grounds. If a town already has plenty of affordable housing, they can just dispense with this altogether and tell people to go home. We don't have as much affordable housing as the state would require, so that doesn't really apply. So the way the timeline reads, we can, we opened the meeting, we recessed until tonight, we'll very likely, unless the board wants to do otherwise, recess to the future, so that our consultant has time to consult with us and talk about what's presented tonight, and we'll reconvene. But we have to close the hearing by March 7th. Now, it's not my plan to take until March 7th unless something comes up that warrants that. I just want to move things along, and hopefully we can. But our last date to issue a final written decision is May 26th, and then people have 20 days to apply, to appeal, rather. So thank you, Holly. Okay. See, I don't know everything. I never claimed to.
I know. That's why there's more than one of us.
Okay.
Could I ask a clarifying question?
Absolutely.
Just to make sure I understand the order and who's who.
Okay.
So Craig, you're not going to be a voting member of the ZBA this evening?
Correct.
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. Okay. Under what circumstances would Craig become a member?
That's my thought.
If.
I think he is going to be a voting member.
I thought that's what we had talked about.
No.
Good to get this clarified, then.
Okay.
Okay, good, good to clarify. We're a three-member board, and the three of us started. Craig was observing.
Okay.
Okay? So to, unless it's necessary, if for some reason one of us, I don't know, wins the lottery and goes away to Tahiti or something.
Sure.
Craig would be an observer and sit in if needed. That's my understanding.
That's my understanding.
Okay. All right.
Are there any concerns from you as the applicant for that?
I'm just, I'm just curious how the vote will operate in terms of there will be three voting members this evening or in the future, unless the members of the board change, but there are still just going to be three members at any given time?
Correct.
Okay.
And also with the 40, you have to have everyone at every meeting?
So one question, has Irving adopted the exception to the Mullen rule?
No.
No.
All right, so then you would have to be physically present at each meeting?
Right.
In order to be.
The three voting people.
Yep.
Right. Okay.
I think that's fine. Sure, sure. Is it, is it better if I remain seated here for cameras and all of everyone in the room?
I'll just give the best direction on that.
I'm sorry?
If you're presenting next to that board, that's fine. You might be there or there, but not so much like over here.
Okay. I'm going to remain seated. I'm, we're going to have other folks coming up to present at the board, so I will stay here and just, and speak a little bit. Good evening. My name is Gina Gavoni. I'm the executive director of Rural Development, Inc., and I want to just give you a brief overview of our organization and the team that we've brought here this evening. RDI is a nonprofit development corporation. We're based just down the road in Turner's Falls, Massachusetts. We have developed over 100 affordable homeownership projects over the years, and over 151, 155 potentially units of affordable rental housing as well. And it is, as many of you know, RDI began its journey as an affiliate of the Franklin County Regional Housing and Redevelopment Authority. I also serve as executive director of the Redevelopment Authority. However, I just want to be clear, there are, there is a board for the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, there is a board for RDI, there are separate books for each entity, and obviously, very different, very different work, although in many, many shapes, Brian and I get to talk on many different levels. At any rate, we have a team with us here this evening, ready to speak more about the project that we're proposing. First off, we have Tom Chalmers from Austin Design Cooperative, right back here. We have Berkshire Design Group, and right behind me, we have Rachel and Greg, okay? And they'll be presenting as well. And then we also have Christine Rogers, who is our development consultant, who's joined us from way out east this evening. As many of you, I think you're already familiar with Alyssa LaRose, who's our lead project manager and the development director for RDI. She will be leaving us temporarily for just a little bit, in just a couple of weeks. And at that point, Christine and I are going to be furthering this project along in all regards. Last but certainly not least, we've been working with attorney Felicity Hardy, who has been helping us with the real estate end of this project. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Alyssa.
Thank you, Gina. Yeah, and I just wanted to note the images on this slide are of our most recent rental development. This is Sandersen Place in Sunderland, and the same project team we have here tonight worked on that project with us. And it was a very, a lot of similarities in terms of it being a collaboration with the town and also a 40B comprehensive permit. I am just going to go through a little bit of project background for the board's sake. We are lucky to have a number of folks in the room who have been living this history and have been working on this project for many years from the town side of things. And so some of these folks will be very familiar with this, but I wanted to just go through it so that everyone had the benefit of understanding some of the history. So in terms of the actual site that we're sitting on now, it was a former Christmas tree farm at one point, and former, former farmland in general. Back in 1996, the town purchased this site and the land behind us. And in 2011, built the senior and community center, which we are in now. The next door, where the library is, that parcel was actually purchased slightly later in 2014. And so that kind of completed this full land, kind of town municipal campus. And the library, of course, was completed in 2020. So going all the way back to the early 2000s, Irving has been working on trying to bring senior housing to town. And so there's been a lot of work done by town committees leading up to this point over many years. And so we want to really acknowledge that there's, there's just been so much background work leading to our involvement in the last couple of years. So in the past, there were several attempts to find a developer, to develop senior housing in the land behind us. They were not successful, but in 2023, the town issued a new RFP. We were the sole, sorry, excuse me, the sole proposer. And this law court did decide to move forward with our proposal, and that was voted on in December of 2023. Excuse me. Since, since being selected, we really have worked very collaboratively with the town to actually refine our project concept. So our initial concept that we proposed through the RFP process is actually very different than what you're seeing tonight. And that's because of input from the senior housing committee, as well as town departments, who attended meetings with the senior housing committee, to really look at what was being proposed. We ended up shifting the alignment of the Care Drive extension from what the town had on the books previously to a different alignment, which kind of benefited both the town as well as the housing development. And it took a lot of input into consideration in coming up with the designs that you're seeing tonight. We also had to go to annual town meeting in May of 2024 to approve the creation of the two lots that needed to be created for the purpose of developing this housing, and to get, for the town to have permission to convey those parcels through a long-term lease to RDI. So this will actually remain town-owned land, but it will be conveyed through a long-term lease and managed by the private entity that will own the housing. And so in August of 2024, we executed our land development agreement and option to lease with the town. That kind of solidifies that initial agreement. And that will eventually be replaced by the actual lease agreements when we get to the point of constructing the project. And then in the past year, we've been working, both the town and RDI have been working on our respective pieces of the project. There are kind of two projects here. One is the road extension and the extension of water and sewer infrastructure, which is being taken on by the town of Irving and will remain fully under the town of Irving's control. And then there's the housing piece. So obviously, tonight, we're just focusing on the permitting of the housing, but it's important to note that those two projects really are interconnected in a lot of ways. And we worked a lot with the senior housing committee to promote both projects. We had a really successful luncheon in January of 2025, and we brought out a lot of state officials to this room, and it was very well received. And since then, we've been working on our plans and as well as funding applications for both pieces.
I just want to just break for one, one minute and just appreciate that the senior housing committee has really taken ownership of this project and named it Evergreen Circle. So as we continue to call it "The Project," it is Evergreen Circle, and I appreciate all of their efforts and time they've spent helping us to inform these designs and, and really just be thoughtful about the space and the process.
And we have a logo, which is really great. And I would be remiss to present about housing without talking about our regional housing needs, which I think probably a lot of people in the room are very well aware of. But the need for housing right now in Franklin County and across the state is really dire. We actually have an existing gap of over 3,000 units. This data on the screen is from UMass Donahue Institute, which just released a new report last month. Similar numbers were presented by FERCOG in their regional housing plan. So we know that we are currently at a real deficit of housing across the income spectrum. And actually, as you can see on the right, we actually have the lowest vacancy rates out of the four western counties for renters. I think that's true also for homeownership, but I just put rental on here. And so we have a real need to add to our housing stock. And a lot of this just has to do with the lack of production since the Great Recession, and Irving is no exception. So this slide just shows building permits issued for new housing units in Irving from 2000 through 2023. And as you can see, starting in 2006, but continuing onward, production really slowed to a halt. We never really recovered from the Great Recession in our region, and then COVID kind of exacerbated the situation. So that leads to higher costs when you have very little stock out there, very little availability. And so we know that current homeowners and renters in Irving are struggling with housing costs. So this is an issue here as well as, you know, across the region. So just to talk a little bit about the affordability component of the project. So we are proposing that all 26 units, which is spread out over three buildings, which we'll talk about the site plan shortly, all 26 units would be considered affordable. They will have restrictions, long-term restrictions to keep them affordable. We are planning on targeting different income levels within that affordability. And so this slide shows what our current proposed targets are, both for the senior housing as well as the multi-generational town home buildings. And so 18 of the units would have both an income restriction as well as an age restriction. And so the senior building, which is 18 units, would be for households with a member age 62 and older, and that falls under certain income thresholds. The town home units, there's eight of those, would just have the income limits as the restriction and not an age restriction. The income limits that are shown on this slide are this year's current limits for Franklin County. These do get updated every year, once a year, by HUD. So by the time we're actually leasing up, these will be different. We do expect that they'll probably go up. They typically go up from year to year, but it gives you an idea of kind of what the upper threshold would be. And just wanting to show how, again, there's a number of households currently living in Irving that may fall within these income categories and may be eligible for this housing. So I'm not going to go through everything on these slides, because there's a lot, I'm sorry. But I just wanted to touch on some of the amenities that we are planning on providing with the housing. And I know Tom, when he, when he shows the architectural plans, will talk a little bit more about some of the community spaces and things like that. But we are focusing a lot on accessibility with all of these units. Obviously, with the senior building, the 18 units of senior housing, kind of aging in place is a key component of the design. And so while we'll have two apartments that will be fully accessible, all of the apartments will be visitable, and we'll have aging-in-place adaptable designs. So they will all have fully accessible bathrooms with grab bars. There'll be adaptability in terms of the kitchens and being able to adjust them over time as residents need those changes. We also have accessibility built into the town home units. The three-bedroom town home units have a fully accessible bedroom and bathroom on the first floor. So if you have a family that has someone who has accessibility needs, that will help meet those needs, as well as a fully accessible two-bedroom apartment.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Do you want to wait till the end for a question, or can I ask a question now?
Go for it.
So one of the things I've been thinking about with all of this is the, the idea of the adaptability and the accessibility.
Yep.
And I understand the aging in place, but I just want to talk for a minute personally about, both my husband and I, over the last few years, have had accidents that required, in our non-accessible house, for us to have grab bars put up and everything else. And I'm wondering if the multi-generational, at least there could be grab bars in all of the bathrooms for, to make sure that in the, in the, you know, the bath tubs and the showers and next to the toilets, make sure that that's there. Because we need to remember that often people might have an accident, and it's not a permanent accessibility need, but it's a time-and-place accessibility need. And I think that's a really important thing. And also the idea of comfort height toilets, for instance. And those are things that aren't cost, aren't very costly, but make a difference for people. Because let me tell you, if you get in a car accident tomorrow, you're going to need them.
Yeah.
Or you get your hip replaced, or you rip your hamstring off. All of those things have happened in our household. So I just want to bring that up. When I saw that in there, I didn't see anything about that. So I would respectfully request that that be thought about.
Absolutely. Thank you. And I don't know, Tom, if you have anything to add? Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, so again, accessibility is key here. In terms of some of the site amenities, Rachel and Greg are going to go into that more with the site plan. But we do have onsite parking for both, both sides of the development, as well as covered bike storage for both the town homes and the senior housing. Outdoor patios, walking paths, kind of open lawn play space. So a lot of nice outdoor features for future residents. There's also a proposed FRTA BASTA, which is part of the public infrastructure improvements. But the idea is to extend the route that currently stops over weatherheads to this site, so that the fixed route will stop right here on Care Drive. And then obviously, the site itself is just really a great location for housing, being right next to the senior center, right next to the library and the school. And so it really offers a lot of amenities for future residents, just within a very easy walking distance. In terms of energy, we are seeking passive house certification for all three buildings. So that means these will be very energy-efficient, very comfortable buildings to live in. We are looking to do rooftop solar PV. Depending on how much we can afford to put on the roof, we could approach a net-zero operations with this combination of efficiency and solar PV generation. um, uh, with this uh, combination of this, of efficiency and solar PV generation. Um, and then we are proposing a backup generator for the senior building, um, which is a requirement from the Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities. Um, and so that will offer, offer some resilience during power outages to power at least one outlet in every unit, as well as HVAC in common areas um, to serve as area of refuge for folks. Um, and I'll let Rachel and Greg go into kind of the stormwater features and things like that. Uh, in a few minutes. And just a little bit more. Um, again, Tom will talk about some of the um, common spaces i- in the senior building. Um, but uh, we are really excited about the design of the senior building and um, some of the community space that it will offer residents, including kind of this wide interior um, corridor in the middle um, that will have natural lighting and offer kind of a space for folks to socialize and to walk, um, especially in kind of the cold winters, um, and, and get, um, get to kind of know their neighbors. Um, in terms of how we uh, manage our properties, we do contract with the Regional Housing Authority for property management service um, and maintenance. Um, we expect to have a part-time onsite property manager, um, onsite. Uh, there is an office in the senior building. Um, so they would be available to help residents with a variety of um, issues or concerns that might come up. Um, and we do plan to contract out for trash recycling and snow removal. Um, and we have a twenty-four-seven on, on-call maintenance service for our residents. We also plan to contract with LifePath for resident services for any seniors or adults with disabilities um, in any of the units. Um, we do this at Sanderson Place currently in Sunderland, as well as, I think, one of our other senior buildings?
Five.
Oh, five, okay. Um, and so they, they, again, it will be a part-time resident coordinator onsite um, to provide a whole host, uh, range of services to folks. Um, really focused on kind of uh, maintaining independence and healthy aging and just building community. So doing different social activities, um, depending on, on kind of what residents are interested in. Um, and then of course, we have uh, services available to all residents um, through our Housing Consumer Education Center, um, including things like budgeting, financial planning, um, maintaining kind of good tenancy, things like that. So we want people like once they're in, uh, to be successful in maintaining their housing. Alright, I'm almost done. Um, I just wanted to give a, a quick um, overview of the site before we launch into more of the details. This is the um, A and R plan that was created and adopted for this project. Um, so again, the, the blue areas are the two lots where the housing will be built. Um, and then the yellow um, is showing the Care Drive extension, um, as well as a small parcel for the sewer pump station, which is all under the um, control of the town. So that's the town's project and the blue pieces are uh, where RDI is proposing the housing. And then finally, just a brief overview of the requested waivers through the comprehensive permit process. So, um, you know, Jan, as you mentioned, comprehensive permit is kind of its own uh, permitting path and it was created as a way to promote more affordable housing in Massachusetts. And so it allows for developers who are proposing affordable housing to um, request waivers from the town's local zoning. Um, and so we have submitted as part of our application, our um, list of requested waivers um, from the, the Irving zoning bylaws in order to make this possible. Um, and these are just kind of a general overview of, of kind of what those waivers entail. Um, but things like allowing for um, you know, multi-unit um, buildings through this process instead of a special permit process, allowing for more than one building on a lot. Um, we have some setbacks, um, as well as, you know, things like accessory structures exceeding three hundred square feet. Um, you know, a lot of details um, that Rachel can get, go into in more detail if there's questions from the board. Um, in terms of parking requirements, we actually do meet the requirements for the senior housing um, that the current zoning lays out. Um, we're proposing eighteen parking spaces on that side. Um, and under the senior housing facility um, requirements, uh, we, we feel that we are meeting um, that, that requirement. On the town home side, um, we're just under the current requirement of two spaces per unit. Um, so right now, we're at one point nine parking spaces per unit with fifteen proposed on that side. Um, so I just wanted to point that out.
I do have a question on parking.
Sure.
What is the thought process behind visitor parking? Is it assumed that they will park in the senior and community center or the library lots or? And will the, will the parking spaces be assigned so that there's, you don't get into that?
We, fun thing. We typically don't assign parking spaces. Um, and so the idea is that visitors, we would encourage visitors to park in the parking lots for our buildings, not in the public parking lots. Um, and so both staff and visitors would park either in the senior housing parking lot or the town home side. So we wouldn't have assigned parking spaces
Okay.
for units, for residents or for visitors.
I'm just thinking that if there's only, if there's eighteen people who all have a car, then if they come home and they can't get in their car because somebody, some visitor is there, how's that gonna work?
Our experience-
I'm a longtime renter.
Yeah. Our experience with our senior housing, um, at least in Sunderland and, and other senior housing operated by the, the Housing Authority is that not all residents are likely to have a car. We do also expect that most of the senior residents will be single person, um, single folks um, occupying um, the unit. So that's been our experience.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, I think I'm done. I think I wanna turn it over to Rachel and Greg from Berkshire Design, um, to go through the site plan, uh, with you all.
Thank you.
Yep. Do you want me to keep place?
That would be great.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, on the screen, um, the plan is rotated a little bit from north what you've seen before just for um, just for orientation. So, um, you can see the parcels that Alyssa described on the top of the screen. Um, this is a senior housing parcel and then m- multi-generational family parcel there. Okay, next slide. Um, as we worked with the site and the grades, um, one of the things that we were considering um, was the relationship of the buildings to the topography on site. So today, the, there is a natural saddle that runs through the middle of the property. Um, and one of the, one of the cre- key criteria that we've heard from RDI and from the um, was making sure that there was a connection to nature with the buildings and that there was ability to have at least one side of the building with a connection to the woods or fields. Um, so in the forming of the layout for the multi-generational housing, um, we looked at bringing, bringing the, the two buildings parallel to the slope. So this is a high point here and naturally the terrain goes down. So sort of nestled in these, on the midpoint of that slope. So in the backyard, when you open up the doors, there would be a wooded area with a, with slope um, for, that'd be a natural place for children to go and play or a place to go sit outside. What this means though is that on the other side, um, we needed to bring in the parking and the fire lane access. Uh, so what, what we have here is we pulled away the sidewalk and the parking from the front, about fifteen feet from the front of those houses. So there is a bit of a vegetated buffer between, um, between the units and those parking amenities. Um, we have fifteen parking spaces spread across the parking lot. We have two EV spaces and then two ADA spaces. Um, in addition, we had to consider uh, trush, trash hauling um, movements and a trash hauling truck needs about fifty feet straight uh, to line up the truck, uh, to be able to pick up a dumpster. And so those considerations and also their turning movements were part of the layout, layout design. So we have a, an dumpster enclosure here at the end of this drive that meets those requirements for the dumpster truck. Hmm. We also thought about the smell that might be coming from a, the dumpster enclosure on a hot day and we wanted to locate that, um, further away from the units as possible. So that's also another reason for moving it out, out to that location. Um, Greg will talk us more through the, through the drainage and the stormwater movement on site, but we are, we're trying to use the stormwater features with the planting to kind of create uh, diversity of space and, and, and little micro habitats on the site. Then for the, for the senior housing portion of the site, w- we were able to, this is a one-story building and its placement on site is to take advantage of the existing grades. So the grades drop off a, quite a bit, almost a story, story more in the back here. So as, we've, we wanted to keep it as close as we could to the, to the property here, but still have enough buffer, um, to be able to get access in. So the, we have a, a two-lane drive entrance that's separated by a median, um, which allows for a fire track and safety vehicle access, as well as a trash hauler to come in. Um, and then we have eighteen parking spaces tucked here behind the building. Um, we have, we're, we have up to four ADA spaces accounted for. Um, the spaces are, are sized so that any one of the spaces could be s- um, swapped out with an accessible space. So we could add more accessible spaces in the future if we needed to, given the way it's designed. Here the trash dumpster enclosure is again tucked away as far as we can from the building. Um, and it takes in consideration the requirements for the trash hauler. Um, between, next to that, we have a covered bike storage area, which, which Tom can talk us through more. Um, and we have two EV charging stations here. Um, the bike enclosure area for this multi-generational area is, is actually attached to the building where the mailboxes are. Um, and in both cases, we have fully accessible walkways around the building, um, for residents. So all, all the walkways from this patio area, the main entry, um, the, the drop-off under the portico, the parking spaces, all the way out across the street. Um, and moving around these units is fully accessible and visitable. Okay. Next up. Okay. Um, oh yeah, so these were some diagrams showing the, the vehicular versus pedestrian circulation on site. So the blue lines show where vehicles come through, um, and how they maneuver through the parking lots. And the red lines show the pedestrian routes and network on the site. Okay, next slide. Um, and then I'll hand this over to Greg to talk about the stormwater.
Could I, could I just follow up on a question Holly had about parking? Um, do you have how many total parking spots?
We have eighteen and fifteen.
Eighteen and fifteen. And, but that, that includes the charging station spots and the handicap spots. So if you subtract the, somebody doesn't have an electric car or they're not, they can't use a handicap car, spots, they're not handicap. How many spots does that leave left for all the people who go live there? It's just a, a concern. I don't know that, I would like to have everybody have a place to park so it doesn't become an issue.
Yeah, so I think on the, it looks like on the town home side, there'd be eleven spaces that don't, that either aren't, aren't EV and aren't ADA. And on the senior side would be reduction of six, so twelve. Twelve non-restrictive spaces.
Okay, this, eight, eighteen units, is it?
Eighteen one-bedroom apartments, yeah.
And twelve places to park, okay.
Our experience is that the ADA spaces are in high demand.
We've actually reconsidered and added more ADA spaces than were, was required in Sunderland and those are well utilized. Um, so it, it, I think that this makes sense based on our experience. It's a fair question, but it, it is something we've thought through.
And the dimensions of the spacing of the spaces are that they can be added or removed. So one, the park, the aisles are nine feet wide and the spaces are nine feet wide, allowing them to be van-accessible aisles or parking spaces. So in the future, if something were to change in the demographic, that's something that could be resigned or restripped.
Okay.
Stormwater?
Hi, I'm Greg Henson from Berkshire Design. Um, yeah, grading drainage, please.
Yeah, that's it.
Oh, this one?
Yeah.
Well, that's it. Yeah, okay.
This, this is the first one?
Yeah, there you go.
There you go. Okay, so um, the, the overall uh, aim was to meet the stormwater standards. And in so doing, we have to mitigate the post-development stormwater peak discharge runoff to less than the pre-development peak discharge runoff. In doing so, we have proposed uh, four separate infiltration basins to cover different various areas of the site. The two in the middle, as you see there, they will serve um, both the senior housing building and the multi-generational buildings. And the stormwater from half of the uh, senior housing, the, the, the southern half, as you look at the plan, will go into that, that second blue basin down. And the other part will go into the big basin at the north, northeast corner of the site. In the uh, senior housing, we have uh, taken the stormwater running into gutters and piping into those two separate uh, locations. For the multi-generational, the stormwater will just flow off in, onto splash blocks and either get into the uh, the south, southwestern, farthest down pond, as you look at the plan, and the one up above. The two in the middle are connected uh, with uh, emergency overflow catch basins, which then discharge into a sediment for bay. The furthest one down, um, that one, there, there's, there's kind of a natural spillway that, that, that I was able to connect to. So I didn't have to, to riprap that because it's already existing. The furthest one up is, is the most important one because most of the drainage will flow through that, through the sediment for bay first and then into that infiltration basin and then over an emergency, uh, riprap-lined emergency overflow spillway. All of these are designed to accommodate the hundred-year storm with freeboard. So, um, we are discharging out of the, the, the northernmost one there, but it is at a rate less than is existing now.
Okay.
We'll go onto the
Yeah, the utilities.
Utilities. Okay, this is the utility plan. There, there, there are existing services in Care Drive now, the water.
Sh- sh- excuse me, you have a question?
Yeah, Brian has a question. I think it's the same question I have.
Back on the other side.
Sorry, Alyssa.
That's okay.
Is this proposing a culvert under the, the new road to connect the two catch basins?
It is. I, I have, I have to connect it. The only way to get the water out of those two middle ones is I, I can't put an, an overflow spillway.
Right.
So I have to connect them. And I put the pipe as deep as I could um, because we don't have the, the grading and drainage, obviously, from the consultants that are doing the roadway.
Okay, we'll just have to coordinate with the water and sewer.
We'll have to coordinate with them and make adjustments as necessary.
Right.
It, once they come up with their plan.
Conversation the other day.
Yeah.
Do you recall the diameter that you're planning for this?
The diameter of the pipe going?
Correct.
Uh, we always use a minimum of twelve for drainage.
Thank you.
And I have one question and I could be confusing myself with cemetery, but I feel like there was a discussion about our new cemetery proposal, that there's new stormwater. Uh, aren't there new drainage requirements? We talked about that at the
You're talking about what's coming from the state?
Yes. So there's new requirements that are supposed to be coming from the state and those are for stormwater as well, correct?
I can't recall if those have been adopted yet or if those are just in draft.
Okay.
Yeah, they're in draft form.
Yeah.
Okay.
They've not been adopted.
Okay.
Okay. So will this cover them? Do we, because I- Okay. So will this cover them? Do we, because I know we don't know exactly what they are, but
We, we actually pulled all of the drainage, all of the discharge out of the hundred-foot buffer of the wetlands.
Okay.
So um, we're not under their jurisdiction, although we did prepare a, a full stormwater drainage report to meet all the standards. So we have met them and uh,
Yeah, because we're dealing with it for cemetery as well. Different concept, but the same.
Okay, as far as utilities go, like, uh, like I was mentioning, there are, there is water, sanitary sewer, telecommunications and electric already in care drive. We're going to connect all of our utilities to those um, different, different services which discharge out on the Northfield Road. The blue is the, the water. I don't know, can you, can you distinguish the color there?
Yeah.
Okay, the blue is the water coming in. It, it, it diverts off, it comes in and diverts off and runs along the senior housing and then makes a ninety down to a fire hydrant. We have three fire hydrants proposed. Uh, the other leg comes down behind the multi-generational buildings and services them there. Uh, there, there's also a fire hydrant between the two multi-generational um, buildings there. Sanitary sewer, one line will come out of the senior housing and the lines coming from the multi-generational buildings will connect. Those will gravity feed down to the proposed pump station. And then by force main will be taken back up to care drive and, and then discharged into that. Uh, electric, electric connects, you know, to the buildings. I can't tell the color there, but yellow, I think.
It's sort of red.
Red.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we're, we'll have three transformers. We're anticipating three transformers with electric. Um, we were told that we would need two transformers in front of the multi-generational and one in front of the senior housing.
Okay.
Um, we also have a generator location shown just on the plan above where the pump station is. Um, and then that would be fueled by propane tanks. So we have two fifteen-hundred gallon propane tanks that are required to, just for the, run the backup generator. Um, and it, I think that was one of the waivers we had talked about in the zoning. I know that we're in a, a water protection area, um, but having the generators is a requirement for this, for the state, by the state for this type of housing. So the propane tanks would be above grade and we, we would be screening them from view.
As far as drainage goes, another thing I, I failed to mention is that uh, all of the stormwater flows through um, water treatment structures to remove the sediment to, to the rates required by the state before it's discharged into these, these infiltration basins.
Um, and then for our planting plan, we have a, a robust list of native species that are drought tolerant and adaptive to our sandy soils here. Um, we know that groundwater is fairly deep from both our stormwater test pits and from the geotechnical test borings. Um, so we wanted to pick species that had characterized with, that were adaptive to drier sandy conditions, such as, as the aspen and the oaks. The oaks especially will have, even the tulip tree, well, they all have really singular taproots that go really down and help them weather drought conditions. Um, we also looked for a variety of trees that had not only habitat value with acorns and supporting pollinators, but also shade value. Um, when we were on site earlier with the Conservation Commission, it was in the summer. Um, and it was, it was really apparent how hot that site can get with the sandy soils and that sun. Um, so we were looking at bringing in as much shade as possible on the site um, with, with variety of species. So that if, in the future, if there was some issue with yet another insect or something, that there would be enough diversity that, that the shade um, and, and the habitat value could be preserved. Um, so next slide. Uh, in addition to the shade trees, we have a number of understory flowering trees. Um, like the service berry. The service berry is one that our indigenous populations relied on to know when it was time to go fishing, the shad that were swimming up the Connecticut. Uh, one of the names of the service berry tree is shad bush. Because when it blooms, you know the shad are running the Connecticut.
Wow.
Um, we also, some, some other good natives like sassafras tree, um, and Mississauga. And then Arborvitae and some, and even, yeah, Arborvitae is a native. I know it's used a lot, but um, it's something that we will be using to help screen the propane area from the senior housing patio. And so we're using it in really intentional ways. Next slide.
It is evergreen circle.
That's right. We need some evergreens. Oh, and it says also blossom fir, which is another native and also smells wonderful. Um, and then in addition, we have a, a pretty robust list of shrubs that are um, native and flowering like, like the rhododendrum. Um, and, and to provide a little bit of color and texture throughout, throughout the season. Okay, next slide. And then some even on the lower levels to even interspersing some carpets of ferns and other grasses um, in, in distinct areas. So the planting plan is, you know, more than just trees and lawn. It's intentional to have a staggered seasonal interest and texture, which is great for the residents, but it's also great for um, the floor and fauna that are nearby.
Will there be sprinkler systems in with some of it or we, we'll have to deal with it if it, if there's another drought?
Yeah, I, we, we are not planning for irrigation. Um, there will need to be irrigation temporarily for the first year during establishment. Um, and that can be handled contractually with the contractor. Um, and can be put on like remote control sensors to run automatically.
Okay, thank you.
And then, and then for snow removal, we're anticipating areas on site for, you know, when a snow pile comes through and needs to push snow, some areas where that can happen um, that will not interfere with life safety access or pedestrian access on site. Um, if we get a really big storm, then um, we'll have to work with the, the management company to, to move the snow offsite. Um, lighting, so the light, the photometrics are not in the package we submitted. We just received this from the lighting designer. Um, so we, we will send that uh, to you to distribute, Brian. Um, so we are using a range of fixtures on site. We're using the buildings to also help with illumination. One thing that we're trying to do is minim, is to minimize the perception of barrier to the front of a building. So if there are large pole-mounted lights right in front of the building, it can feel kind of like a barrier. It can be not so welcoming. But we, they are really handy. The tall fixtures are handy for like parking lot areas where you have a large area where you need to cover with light, um, because they cover a much wider area than say a baller light or a downlight. Um, so we have two, we have two types of fixtures in the photometric plan that you'll see. Um, they are both, they're labeled S1 and S2 and they're both like that shepherd hook type of fixture. Full cutoff, which means there's no light going up above the fixture. Um, the difference between the two is just the angle of the spread of the fixture. Um, so we have those in both the parking lot areas for illumination, bringing the illumination up to like two to three foot candles and, and the hotter spots in the parking areas. And then around the building, um, at the entries, we have wall pack mounted lights, which are the two lights in the right-hand corner there, um, which are surface-mounted to the building. Uh, they're really helpful like at a door entry. Um, and then in some of the walkways, uh, we're using the baller light, which is the image below the shepherd hook light, uh, to, just for safety and to highlight where, where the pathway is. Um, all in all, uh, the other piece that is good to note is that we understand that the plans for care drive extension are being developed. And we're under the assumption that that would, would include lighting and, and possibly street lighting. And so this photometric plan is partial and that when that plan is developed, it might be good to revise and look at the two systems together and see if like, perhaps we remove some of our lights if it's getting too bright um, with that shared illumination between the two projects.
To that point, the town's plan is to provide at least six streetlight installations along the layout that would light the bus area, the sidewalks on both sides down to the cul-de-sac. So the town will be providing that infrastructure and we should definitely coordinate.
Okay. And then the next two slides are more zoomed in, looks at what, what the, where the foot candles are falling now around the building and the site. You know, we're in that, in that range of two to three for the most part, one to three in the parking areas. And then we do have a couple hotspots right underneath the canopies at the entries. So um, for, I think, yeah, I think for um, the senior housing underneath the drop-off, we have four fixtures that are inside the overhang canopy. So not, you know, doesn't have any light going above it. Um, but that is in the eight-foot candle range and that is the nature of the fixture that comes for that, that canopy lighting. And similarly, in the multi-generational housing, there is a hotspot underneath the awning for the entries for those units where we're again in that eight to nine, eight to nine foot candle range. But for the most part, we've been able to keep the, the lighting low. Um, and we're trying to keep light trespass to a minimum. Um, there is a little bit that's happening at the edges because of the placement of the parking lot with relationship to where the, the property lines are. But we drop off very quickly to zero foot candles or point one foot candles or when we get away from the fixtures.
A question for Brian. When, when we're developing the, the town part of this, will there be, will, is there a thought to try to coordinate the look of the lights with the look of the lights that are being put like in the parking area so that they, there's some aesthetic appeal? I'm sorry.
It's a lovely idea. I, I think that that's always a goal if we can make it happen. I do know that the town, for, for a host of reasons, parts and labor and, and all the other things that go into managing a, a fleet of equipment throughout town, they try to keep uh, the options limited. So we do have a model that we're looking at right now that's used on Lillian's Way, a neighboring cul-de-sac. Uh, it's a solar-powered feature um, that we've had in place for just over two years and it's, it's performing well and the residents have given positive feedback. So that's the model that we're looking at right now, but we need to have that conversation with the RDI team.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course.
Greg will talk us through the fire truck access.
So we prepared a swept path, as they're called swept path movements for an aerial ladder truck. And um, as you can see, as you come in, in the main drive and you take a right to the, to the divided entry exit, we, we had to make that access, that opening um, like seventy feet wide so we could get that ladder truck in there. It can go in there and, and turn left and go all the way to the end of that, that northern parking lot to uh, you know, fight a fire from there. And to get back out, it, it can back up towards the dumpster and then it can make that movement to get back out. For the multi-generational, it can just go along care drive and make that left turn in. And, and also the radiuses are big enough so it can just make that, that circular motion and get back out on care drive. There's also a fire access lane on the uh, southern, well, I'm going to call it southern, plan southern, um, where, where the fire truck could pull in there also and, and then it could back out and then make the movement out. We made the uh, the, the service drive down to the maintenance area. We made that radius big enough to where that truck can also pull in, go down there and then it would have to back out uh, from there. So we, we've covered all aspects of where the, the largest fire truck could maneuver through the site.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
So Tom, do you want to come up and present the architectural?
Okay, so um, as you know, there's three separate buildings on the site. Um, the largest one and the first one in the presentation is the seniors building. Uh, it's a one-story uh, building that houses um, eighteen units. We can go next slide. And looks like that. And basically, you know, it consists of two rows of units on either side of an open corridor slash courtyard, which I will show you later, but is designed to be built out to be more than just a hallway. It's going to be a sort of uh, community space. At the front end, there's uh, there are, there's community spaces and then at the far back, there's also a small screen porch. There's a community space. Um, next slide. There are two basic unit types in, in the building. One is a fully accessible, which we call the group two, which is based on the state code as a group two. And the other is visitable, which is indicated as the group one unit. The group two has fully accessible bathroom, roll-in shower, grab bars, two washing machines and a large bedroom with turning radius. The kitchen has thirty-four inch countertop and a cooktop and sink with an opening below and then a wall oven. The group one is similar in that the, the bathroom is basically the same. It's a fully accessible wa, roll-in shower, toilet has grab bars. Difference is that the sink has a vanity under it, whereas in the group two, it's open below. And it also has a washer and dryer, uh, bedroom and the kitchen as well has um, does not have all the open spaces under the, under the counter. So those two units are repeated. There's two of the group two and the rest are the group one. Um, so as you enter the building, um, there's a covered porchette that you can pull up under. And then you can, you come in, there's a vestibule, airlock vestibule and there's a couple of sort of community function spaces in there. There's an office. There's the mailroom, which is on the left as you go in. And then there's a community room and bathroom. The community room has a small kitchenette, which would have refrigerator and a counter space and a sink.
Can I ask, how, how big is that community room roughly?
Uh, I can't, do we have a
I don't think it has the square footage on there.
Yeah, it's, it's not large. It's a few hundred square feet. Um, we have it, we, you can see we have it furnished in the drawing with a, there's room for a table and a number of chairs. Um, and then there's a piece of the, the large view of what we're intending to do with the, with the large atrium space in the middle. And that is currently sort of, we can have a lot of different design ideas for that. But basically that's one possible one, which includes sort of uh, landscaped or spaces in the middle with paths crossing. And the idea is to, is to have residents feel like they're sort of on a street and they all have a little recess at their entrance and a window looking out into that. Um, and so the idea is to be able to see across and see people that are, you know, walking around or sitting out there. Um, and try to make it, you know, have some community relations. Um, next slide.
Can I ask a question on that though? The landscaping that's shown in there, I, I guess when I originally looked at it, I thought, oh, it was going to be open.
Yeah, it's not.
I had questions about in my head, like how that was going to work, but um, so
It's, they're not going to, it's not going to be heavily planted.
But there's going to be like some like indoor-y type plants, maybe? Like I, I was originally imagining like some oak trees. And, but now I'm realizing that there's no actual opening, so it'll be more like, I don't know, a ficus or something.
There'll be natural light coming from above. There's light tubes, um, similar to what you have here um, in this building that will all these little, um, these squares are actually light tubes.
They're actually daylight.
I did not know that.
Yeah, I mean, you can't tell right now.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, it's, it, that, that centerpiece is still very much a work in progress as to how we're going to. Um, so this is a section that shows you, you got your, on the, on the two sides, you have your units. And then um, because of the width of the building, you get quite a high ceiling at the top. And we'll have, so we'll have a lofted space.
That's cool.
Um, what's not shown on here, but is on the elevation, is at the top, there's sort of an overbuilt uh, low cupola. It, it's not, it's, it's a It it's not, it's it's a overbuilt on the roof and it will hold, it will hold the light tubes in it that will come down through. So next. Right, and this this is a perspective view of how that would work. And so it's sort of a telescoping thing to try to bring it a little bit down in scale in the front and then it gets up higher and then steps back down at the end. That's the back view. Solar panels on the roof. Here you can see the, this is the end that's opposite of the entrance. We've got a a screen porch there for residents. Down below, there's a little bit of a basement that will hold mechanicals and has at great access. Fortunately for us, there's a bit of a s- natural slope there and so we can get into the basement from. And that's the other side that's sort of facing the multi-generational houses. And you can see how it steps down towards the back. So there's two multi-generals, multi-generational townhouses. They're similar, but a little bit different. This one, number six, is the first one as you come down the road. There's a fully accessible unit on the right there, which is a one-story unit. And that's similar to the ones in the senior center. It's got accessible kitchen, it's fully accessible bath. And then the two in the middle are more of a townhouse-type configuration where they have living areas on the ground floor and then stairs going up to the second floor. And on this one, we have, this is partially, I think, in answer to your first question. So both bath, there's half baths downstairs and they both have grab bars and turning circle on the on the floor. I mean, in terms of floor space and clearance. These have a front and back door. And then the last unit on the left is a three-bedroom, two-story, it's three bedrooms. The ground floor is, has a fully accessible path and an accessible bedroom. So the, and then there's two bedrooms upstairs. And this is the second floor of that. You can see the. Now, we we always put, we're not showing grab bars in the second floor bathrooms, but we always have blocking. We always put blocking for any kind of accessory that is needed. And one of the things we do also is where we have tubs and showers, we always have a grab bar in the in the tub at the end wall. And then it's also block, there's also blocking in the wall in case someone wants to add something like that.
And these all have washer and dryers in the.
They have washer and dryers. Go, can you go back one?
Yeah.
On the, so they have washer and dryers. The non-accessible units have stacked washer and dryer. It's in a closet. The accessible one has a, has side-by-side. So it requires a little bit more space.
Actually, I have a question about, this goes back to the senior apartments. Are those walk-in showers or are those tubs?
They're all all roll-in showers. They're right at gray, at no no threshold, so you can roll a wheelchair into them. They're all the same.
Thank you.
And one thing I I forgot here, this building, each building also has a basement, a partial basement. So here, there's a stair going down. That stair on the outside is going down to a basement. And in that basement, we, is where our mechanical equipment is. And this is the elevation. There'll be, you know, tr- really traditional New England, clavering siding, trim, asphalt roofs. This is a section of that building, shows you the basement. And the difference in one and two stories. This is, building eight is very similar, except it's got, it does not have a fully accessible unit. And it it still has, it has the accessible ground floor of the three-bedroom unit. And then the other thing that it has is, on to the right of the stairs, there's a covered area that has mailboxes and some bike storage. So between the two buildings is an area where the the mailboxes for these two units are, separate from the senior center. And that's the second floor, similar to the other one. And the elevation is very similar. They have a little covered, coverings at the entrances.
Nice.
And there's the little section.
Oh, I think that's it. And then we just have the technical drawings for reference.
Um, the mechanical ones.
Um. Which.
Oh, this is, oh, yeah, this is.
Yeah, these are all just like the the technical plan set. There's a lot of them.
Yeah, there's a lot. We need to go through them all. If you wanna, I can briefly go into the sort of mechanical systems quickly. They they all are, you know, designed to be passive house, very airtight. So that means they have a a fresh air system that delivers fresh air to each u- to the units and exhaust. Through an ERV, heat recovery unit. They are a combination of mini-split heat pumps and central heat pump units, depending on.
So everything's electric?
Everything is electric. And the water heaters are heat pump, electric heat pump water heaters.
And they're below the u- they're in the basement area of the units or are they in the.
Yes, the the water heaters are in in the basement.
Okay.
And the air exchange, and the air-to-air heat exchangers are in the basement also and are ducted to the to the building. So they, we have, we have a a sort of building-wide fresh air and hot water. And then the heat is within the unit itself, either with a mini-split and a condenser outside.
Yeah.
Or, yeah, or a duct.
And is there a mini-split in e- in, so each bedroom has a mini-split and then the common area? Like within the the downstairs part, the, like the living room, kitchen, has one mini-split? So there's each, even the one-bedroom seniors have two.
Yeah, the all bedrooms have their own mini-split.
And they'll be in the ba- the condenser will be in the back?
There is the site plan that shows where they are.
Back here somewhere.
I'm a mini-split fan.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it was the utility plan. Uh, this doesn't show all of them. This shows the compressors for the senior building.
Yeah, I think on the full drawing packet, you have probably have it in there.
It's okay. I can look it up. I have a giant thing at home.
Oh, it does show some of them, I guess.
Yeah, they're generally on the backside.
Yeah.
And the ones for the senior center are all down at the end in the back where the slope slips away so that.
Oh, okay.
Because they're they're quite tall, the the ones that are made to serve as the whole building are
Oh, okay.
pretty large entities.
Yeah, they're the blue squares on this plan on each side.
Okay.
So we kept them away from unit windows, things like that, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yep.
Great. So that's that's the end of our presentation. Happy to take questions or? And then can we have like a little five-minute break?
Are these slides available online?
Take a five-minute break first or?
We can, um, we can send a a link similar to what we did for the full plan set, um, because it's a large document. And then, so Brian can distribute that to to the board.
Could I ask you, I have a number of questions. They'll take a few minutes. Could we maybe take just a five-minute break in the bathroom or whatever, just for a minute or two?
Sure.
A quick bio break.
Come back in ten minutes, on ten minutes. Okay. Okay.
We'd like to reconvene if everybody's here, I think. I had a couple, a few questions. Will, and some of it, I believe I know, but I look for the benefit of people watching, and they'll be watching, we hope, over time. Will these, these units will be leased? The town still owns the property, but will there be taxes paid?
Yes. Yes, they will, yes, that all, everything you said, yes.
Okay, good. I thought that was the case, I just wanted to be certain. One of the things that I believe you submitted was this list of requested waivers from zoning. And there are a number of them on this page, if you're familiar with what I'm talking about.
We have it here.
Okay, and I asked Brian to make a copy, so we have them. Could we just touch briefly on each one? So that as a zoning board, these are the, I'll call them the exceptions from a zoning regulation that you're requesting or planning on doing. So that, again, for the record, I hope, I hope a lot of people watch these things. It's been a long time coming to get things online, so I can click on the TV from home and watch stuff. I was in Athol one time, and was in a Lithuanian club. And somebody said, "Turn off the Celtics, the Select Board is on."
Wow.
And so we're not quite to that point yet, but I hope people get to, it's their tax money, I hope they get to watch and see what's going on. So, and for my own peace of mind, I'd just like to touch on the things that are, that are exceptions to the zoning, if you could.
Okay, so I can, I can start, and I'll, I'm going to defer some of these to Rachel and Greg to address, but I can start with the use regulations. So this actually comes up in both use and dimensional regulations, but there's a requirement in the zoning that you can't have more than one principal structure on a lot. And as you can see, for the multi-generational townhome lot, there's two principal buildings. So that's one of our requested waivers, is that, you know, we don't have separate lots for each of those buildings. And then, the second one has to do with the permit process. Again, typically, a multi-unit dwelling or a senior housing facility, which these both fall under those categories. So the 18-unit senior building falls under the senior housing facility definition in the zoning. And then, the townhome buildings would fall under a multi-unit dwelling, because they have four units per building. So typically, those would go through, need to go through a special permit process by the planning board. But again, because this is a comprehensive permit, we're requesting that instead, the permitting process is, is not special permit.
Can I, can I just jump in here?
Sure.
Mr. Chair. Just so I can clarify, and this is very common in 40B applications. You'll see both substantive waiver requests and procedural waiver requests. So this particular one is a procedural waiver. Generally, the way that I deal with these in a decision is to note that the request is denied as unnecessary, so that you're on record as saying, "They don't need a waiver for this," because it's a procedural waiver. The way Chapter 40B works, it subsumes all other local permitting processes. So they're not required to get a specific waiver from a special permit requirement, because the comprehensive permit is the special permit that they would otherwise need.
Yes, and I do understand, I appreciate you clarifying that for people who may not understand, and I do.
And I just wanted to point it out, because sometimes it can look a little bit overwhelming in terms of the total number of waivers that are being requested, but a lot of them are really just procedural and they're not substantive.
Yeah, and I don't need to go in great detail about each one, but just so it touches on it, so everybody's aware.
Yep.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, and that's helpful to understand, too. And there's one more like that, I believe, further down.
Okay.
In terms of Section 4 Dimensional Regulations, again, this section mentions not more than one dwelling shall be built upon any lot. So, again, we're proposing two principal structures on one lot. In terms of setbacks, there's a 20-foot front setback required in the Central Village District, which is where the zoning district that we fall in. And as you can see on the plan, actually, that's up on the slide, and I can go here. The front setback would be considered the one along Care Drive extension. And so we have that corner of the senior building is considerably within that setback, and it gets quite close to the lot line. So that's a requested waiver from the zoning. Similarly, we have some other setback requests, which I think these plans do a good job of showing, kind of where the setbacks are and where, where our structures are. So, for the senior housing, the dumpster, oh, let's see here. Oh, we're going to the multifamily first, sorry. So the dumpster enclosure is also within the side setback. There's a 10-foot minimum setback that this is, you know, encroaching upon. And then, the dumpster enclosure for both the townhome units, as well as the senior housing, is larger than 300 square feet. And you do have a maximum of 300 square feet for accessory structures. Our enclosures are pretty large to allow for accessible, allow for enough space around each of the trash and the recycling dumpsters to make sure that folks can easily access either of them. So that's kind of why they're a bit on the larger side. And then, in terms of the parking requirements, we talked a little bit about this in the presentation. For the townhomes, the multi-generational townhomes, two off-street parking spaces are required per dwelling unit. We're showing 15, so that's a ratio of 1.9 space per unit. So we're just under what's required. And then, I do note here that, under the senior housing facility bylaw, the parking requirement is different. It's half a space per bedroom, plus, and I might forget, one, enough spaces for employees, and then, a visitor space for every 10 bedrooms. And so when we kind of calculate that out, I think it comes to, you know, we have 18 units, one-bedroom units, so that's nine. And then, we have a maximum of two staff on-site at one time, because we have a resident service coordinator and a property manager. So that would be 11. And in terms of visitor spaces required, it actually would only be one additional space for visitors. So that would be 12, right? 12 or 13? And we, and we have 18, so we're well beyond what's required there. So it's not in here as a waiver.
Okay.
So then, the next section has to do with the design of parking areas. So you have a section in your zoning that is all about, you know, how to design parking when you are required to have it, for areas of 10 or more vehicles. One is that there shouldn't be more than one entrance and one exit from such lots per 300 square feet of frontage. For the multi-generational townhomes, we do have two entrances and exits that are closer than that. They are roughly 180 feet, is that right? From each, and so that is closer than, than what your zoning is asking for. And we have these two different access points, really, to help with that flow of emergency vehicles through the site. And so that was the, the reasoning behind that. And then, for the senior housing, the curb cuts here, the entrance. Okay, so it's, oh, it's the maintenance. So this distance between, the distance between the maintenance curb cut in the rear and the main entrance curb cut is 239 linear feet. So again, it's smaller than that 300 feet. In terms of screening, there's a lot of language about, you know, screening from a budding residential use. These are the same projects, but we are acknowledging that you have the senior housing use is abutting the townhome use. And while we do propose a certain amount of landscaping between each one, we also are trying to promote community amongst both buildings. And so we may not be fully meeting all of those screening requirements. And then, parking area being located to the side or rear of the property to the maximum extent feasible. We're achieving that with the senior housing building, where we have the parking to the rear. But again, for the townhomes, the parking is more in the front of the property. And, and that had a lot to do with, again, kind of the topography of the site, wanting to maintain some forest buffer between the townhomes and the library. It was just, it's kind of a weird site, so that's how the parking ending up getting configured.
Okay, most.
And then, the adequate screening of parking areas from abutting residential parcels and roadways. Again, we're seeking to kind of balance screening with this sense of community, so not wanting to completely enclose, you know, the townhomes on one side and the senior housing on one side, but having kind of a balance and mix of planting. Oh, and then the five-foot buffer. So we do have two ADA parking spaces in the, is it the townhome side?
Yes.
That are pretty close to the property line, and so they don't have that five-foot buffer between parking and the, the public right-of-way. But on that section, here, I'll bring that up. Right here, I don't know if you can see my cursor. We have this really wide area of, of right-of-way that provides buffer. So while it's not technically on our property, it is still a pretty significant landscaped area between the roadway and the parking space. In terms of signs, we're proposing project signs. Do you know if those are on any of these slides, where the signs are going to be? I wasn't sure. Oh, maybe it's, it's kind of here.
It is, it's just very faint, so it's right there, is that one.
Okay. Oh, I, I think I can see it. So we're proposing two project signs that would meet your sign requirements in terms of size, that would basically just have the address and the Evergreen Circle logo on each of them. So one would be, for the senior building, we're proposing it to be basically in this corner here, as you approach the building. And so that is within 10 feet of a public right-of-way. It's pretty much right on the, on the border there. And then, for the multifamily, the sign actually, right now, I think, my cursor just disappeared, here it is, is, is basically right here, which right now is, is kind of showing in the public right-of-way. So, I mean, we'd be happy to shift it as, as needed, but we wanted it to be visible as folks are driving up Care Drive. Do you want to talk about erosion control?
Sure, yeah.
I think you'll do a better job than me about that.
In Section 6 Performance Standards, there's a requirement that a grade should not exceed 25%. 25% is the equivalent of a slope that achieves four feet horizontal to one foot vertical. And then, we are actually using slopes that are slightly steeper, 33%, so we have three foot horizontal to one foot vertical. So it's slightly steeper than, than the standard. But that is what allows us to, to get the stormwater basins in and sort of manage the grades on the site.
Sure, yeah, so for the pedestrian and vehicular access, there is a requirement to ensure that the interior circulation within the site separates pedestrian, bikeway, and vehicular traffic. And for the multifamily townhomes, we did have a request from the fire department to have the access drive here adjacent to the sidewalk and closest to the buildings. And so that meant we had to put parking spaces across from that. So it just means that there will be conflict with pedestrians basically going from the, the townhouse apartments to these parking spaces. And then, in terms of the senior housing facility section of the zoning bylaw, we again run into the building setback issue at the front corner of the building. So that's the same waiver essentially that we already talked about. And then, yeah, do you want to cover the landscaping?
Sure, yeah. Similar, in the, in the bylaw, landscaping and screening is required to obscure visibility from, from the dumpster areas and the parking areas, except for points of egress. except for points of egress, and those need to be fifteen-foot buffers. So the, the access drive is actually within fifteen feet of the property line. It's about seven feet at, at its closest. So we'd be seeking a waiver for that. And then the bike shelter is within ten feet of the property line also. And the dumpster is nine feet of the property line. Do you want me to talk about the groundwater?
Sure. Yeah, I think the first one is the procedural.
Oh, go ahead.
That, Paul, you were talking about where typically activities that are within the groundwater protection overlay district, which this project falls within that district, would need a special permit by the select board. And so this first waiver, again, is, is just saying, instead of going through that process, we're going through the comprehensive permit process for that, those requirements.
This, has Conservation Commission been involved somewhere along the line?
Yeah, we have, we, we went to the Conservation Commission prior to finalizing the plans to confirm the delineation. So we received an ANRAD confirming the delineation, which then served as a basis. And we submitted a notice of intent at the same time. We submitted the comprehensive permit package. That hearing is actually scheduled for next Tuesday. So we'll be going through that process.
And that process is separate from the comprehensive permit process.
I, I simply ask because I know our aquifer is around here and, and to at least give it a mention. And that it's being taken care of in case anybody was concerned. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, I can take the next one too, which you already mentioned. But so within that groundwater protection overlay district section, there is a prohibition on emergency generators unless required by statute, rule, or regulation. And so we are just noting here that the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities does require senior affordable housing facilities to have a backup emergency generator. So we are proposing a generator for that building. And we are proposing above-ground propane tanks to power that because there is also a prohibition against underground storage tanks. So we're not asking for a waiver for that. We're just putting them above ground. And then in terms, terms of storage of de-icing chemicals, that's prohibited unless it's stored in an area within a structure designed to prevent generation and escape of contaminated runoff or leachate. So we will store a, a small amount of de-icing chemicals for use just on walkways on-site. It will be in the basements of, of the buildings. And otherwise, the services for the roadways and the parking areas will all be contracted out, so they, they won't be storing anything on-site. And we do propose using calcium chloride mix for de-icing, which contains less sodium than typical de-icing chemicals. And we have experience using that in Sunderland for similar reasons. Yeah, so that's the groundwater protection district. And do you want to go over the?
Sure.
The rest of these?
Yeah, in section ten for permits, we're required to have ability to connect to sewage and waste disposal. So as we noted previously, the town is currently developing both the above-grade care drive extension as well as the below-grade utilities, which would be, be the sewer pump station and force main and, and water, water service to that point. Then also, we would be normally required to get the Town of Irving driveway and curb cut and go through that, that process with the town superintendent and highway department. So that's a procedural item. With relationship to that, it states that under no circumstances shall any of the surface water from, from the project enter the town-owned public road layout. But where we are, where we do have the driveway connections, we do have a minimal amount of water coming into the town right-of-way. With the note that the town right-of-way grading is still forthcoming with that project team. So we, we do not know how that will be designed, but we've prepared a stormwater report which details out the flows coming off in, in, in those locations. And then the dimensional regulations requirements under that is that a residential driveway with its minimum and max ten. And as we mentioned before, that this, this curb cut for the senior housing is seventy feet in total, and that allows for the two access lanes, the turning radius required for the fire turning vehicles, and the dividing median for, for safety and clarity. Then additionally, for the service drive, we widened, we widened that entry. And it has a curb cut width of forty feet, again, to accommodate the turning radius of, of the fire truck. And it is not uniform width going down. It is wider at the neck. And then it, it's seventeen feet, and then it, it narrows down to, to fourteen, fourteen feet. The multi-unit townhome driveway curb cut is also wider than the twenty feet. It is forty-seven feet wide. And again, that is due to the requirements of the fire truck. Should I go through the other, other considerations?
Yeah, we, we should, yeah, that'd be great. Thanks.
Some other things we just wanted to note that the management of stormwater on-site does extend beyond the property line for the, for the senior housing project. This will require a temporary construction easement between the development and the town to allow for the temporary disturbance. Today, there is an existing stormwater subsurface system here on this senior center par- senior housing parcel that serves and collects stormwater from the existing senior system, center. It is a subgrade system with an outlet on this property. It's our understanding that the town plans to relocate the system outside of this parcel and redesign it, and that, that would happen before the construction of this project. And then, and this project is dependent upon the construction of, of the care drive extension, which, which the town is helping, helping facilitate and, and fund.
Thank you. I, I asked the question, and it took a while to go through all this, but not specifically because I had any issues with any of it. And as our consultant says, we may just say this is not necessary anyways. But it lets anybody know who wants to watch this in the future that this has been given a thorough hearing and thoroughly looked at. And from what I get from this, I glean little bits of information, like the fire department wanted us to do this. And this collaborative effort with the, with the housing committees that we've had working on this for years, and you've been very, very cooperative with them and helpful. And whether it's fire department or the highway department or whoever it is, there's been no confrontational, we're just going to come here and do this kind of stuff. Although perhaps you could have. So, so I appreciate that, and I appreciate you going through this for us. Are there other questions or, or other things you have to present to us?
We're happy to.
I'll ask if there's anyone here, I don't see a lot of townspeople here, but anyone who wants to speak in favor of this project. If, if not, is anyone here wants to speak against the project? Okay. Well, I'm going to ask advice of, of our consultant here, but I would like to recess this meeting to a date certain from now. Pick a date that's, that's convenient for people so that, that our consultant has adequate time to look through and advise us if there's some questions we should be asking that we don't know about or, or not perhaps. And I'll expect him to do that in five minutes.
Understood.
So if, if it's the pleasure of the board, I'd, I'd like to recess, I'd like a motion to recess this meeting since there seems to be no other comment to be had. Just pick a date and a time. A little bit, I'll say, at the convenience, to some degree, of you folks when you want to be here and, and our consultant when you can be here. But we need to announce now when we're going to recess too. So.
Before you do that, I, I did want to ask.
Absolutely.
Did the board want to consider doing peer review of, of this proposal?
I'm not sure we know exactly what it is.
So the way it works, the board is allowed to retain its own consultants to review the project and provide comments and suggestions to the board. As part of this process, that the applicant would be required to fund. They would put money into an account that's created pursuant to generalized chapter forty-four, section fifty-three G. It's known as the fifty-three G account. And that would pay for the peer review to review the, the project. A lot of projects that I'm involved in have very substantial peer review. I don't think that would be necessary. I don't think there's any need for architectural peer review. It's not a large traffic generator, so I don't think traffic peer review is going to be necessary. The only thing that I could potentially see is that you may want to have a general civil engineering peer review slash stormwater. And that is very typical. And other than that, I don't really see what you would want to peer review.
Well, could I ask the, resume qualifications, whatever, of the people, gentlemen who explain the stormwater stuff? I, I don't know that, if, if we have someone who's qualified to design that stuff, I really don't think the people who are proposing, much my opinion, I don't think the people who are proposing this are trying to put something over on us on stormwater.
Not suggesting that at all. But typically, you know, the boards don't have the level of expertise. I certainly don't have the level of expertise to review the civil engineering plans or the stormwater design and let you know whether or not they're compliant, whether or not there's any issues or concerns. Typically, you will get feedback from a civil peer review engineer that is going to improve the design. And, and there's usually not a lot of conflict between the applicant's consultants and the peer review consultants. The peer review consultants will review it, will make their suggestions. The applicant's consultants will make revisions accordingly, and they'll get, you know, onto the same page. That's typically how the process works.
So when you say a civil, would you, are you talking about, like, I looked at, I looked through all the plans. I couldn't tell you based on the amount of structure for keeping the roof up is adequate. Would that be something that, that's?
That, that's more, no, that's more of a construction-level detail.
Okay, so the civil's more the?
The, the site development.
The site development.
Yeah. The, the, the actual final, so the way, the way the chapter forty-B works is the applicant is only required to submit preliminary plans to the board. They're not required to provide construction-level details. You don't get that until after the board has issued a decision. And before they pull a building permit, they have to come in and submit their final plans that would have all of those construction-level details.
Okay.
And those construction-level details would be required by the building inspectors or whoever.
Correct. And that's who would review those plans at that point in time.
Okay. Yeah, because I was like, I was looking at them going, oh, they look good to me.
So, but what a civil engineer peer review would, would look at, the layout, they would look at the circulation, they would look at things like the trash and recycling and determine whether or not they think that those are appropriately cited. And, and also, you know, a review of your zoning bylaws, and they may identify additional areas where waivers are necessary. Sort of that level of detail, I don't think it would add a significant amount of time to your review process. But it would be the sort of information that a board would typically get in this process.
I don't think it's a bad idea.
Dennis, you have any thoughts on this?
Not a word.
Not a word.
And how does one find this peer?
So I can recommend consultants. I don't know, like, the, the planning board would generally have peer review consultants that they work with and their processes. Certainly, you know, you can reach out to them and ask them if they can peer review this. Presumably, they don't have any conflicts.
Right.
And if not, then we can figure out someone else to ask.
And, and I don't know if it's appropriate to ask this, I'll give it a shot anyways, but say so. You've done all the projects. Have they had some peer review things on some of those?
Tom, I believe we did. Yeah, yeah. On the civil.
Yeah, and that's all I think is necessary here.
I think it's a good idea.
Could you present some past work you've, projects you've worked on over the, for the rainwater?
My recollection is that these Western and Sampson, it wasn't tied and bound, but so it wasn't a local civil engineering firm.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I, I don't really remember.
I'm sorry, I couldn't, couldn't hear.
I'm not sure they're letting us hear right now.
I don't remember.
Nitch.
Nitch Engineering.
Judith.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, there are a great number of different engineering firms, you know, that do this peer review consulting work. And again, my first inclination would be whoever the planning board uses, you know, will typically, you know, be very familiar with the zoning bylaws, you know, and the subdivision rules or regulations and everything that would be applicable to development in the town. So that's the best bet, presuming that they don't have a conflict. If they do, then I can, you know, I can recommend someone.
I'm going to make a motion. I'm going to make a motion that we, per advice from our consultant, who, now I can't remember your name.
Paul.
Paul, sorry. It's getting late. That we consult with the planning board to find out a peer review for a civil review of, a civil engineering review of the plans for the wastewater, et cetera. Not wastewater.
No, yeah.
Stormwater. Well, it's waste at that point.
And, and what I would recommend, so that you don't waste time, is to, to delegate the process of selecting that peer review consultant, either to Brian or to the town planner. So that by the time you're here for the next meeting, they would already be in place and would have already reviewed, so we're not wasting time.
What might be a, a normal timeframe for finding one, whatever hiring process or whatever, what time might this take?
Usually takes me a little over a week to.
Over a week?
Yeah. We need to send them an example of, of the submission, and they need to be able to respond back with a, a proposal to engage for services and to let us know their availability. So that takes a couple of days, and then we get the, the price proposal.
And I'll add on to the motion that we, that we delegate the choice and the work to get it done to either the town administrator or the town planner, whichever one has the time to do it at this point.
That makes sense.
I'll, I'll second the motion. I'll, I'll second the motion. Personally, I don't see the need for it, on the other hand. When, when, when might you have had a plan to begin doing something here?
Oh, in terms of our timeline? Right now, we are working towards our funding, a funding application deadline with the state. That would be in March with a pre-application deadline in December. So the idea is that typically, we need to try to get through the zoning piece of, of a project, so whether it's comprehensive permit or a special permit, before the state will say yes to allowing us to apply for the funding. So we do intend to put in a pre-application in December. We understand that we likely won't be done with this process at that point. But the sooner the better in terms of our, our funding cycle.
It's, it's a critical time, and what, what our experience shows is that, that the time between pre-application and, and the full application, which is due in late March.
I think it's March seventeenth or nineteenth, something like that.
March teens. They will be checking in with us on the progress to see where we've progressed from the time of. of the initial application, where we intend to be at the time of full application. So making as much progress here is critical. And I just, I just want to go back to a conversation we had at the last meeting where I asked if we could be helpful in finding a consultant, and what I actually meant was the peer reviewer. I would just want to make sure, and I'm sure Brian or the town planner would be great at selecting someone who would be available and helpful to work with. That's just so that we can expedite this. That's my goal, not to influence who is chosen, but just that we find someone who's amenable to coming here and prioritizing this work.
Okay. It seems like we're on an agreement on that happening. So if I'm hearing this right, I'm thinking of where we are today, couple, three weeks gets us close to Thanksgiving holiday time. Might go over into the first week of December, maybe?
I'm going to be gone for half of November and part of the beginning of December through the 2nd, so just to let you know.
Through the 2nd of December?
I will be coming back on the 2nd of December.
Okay. And again, if we could, and when might your unavailability start?
Pretty much right now.
Okay.
Because I also have to do budgeting for the town. So, yeah, but I mean, we can meet in December if that works. But we still have a motion that we need to vote on.
We do. And I don't mean to forget about your motion, Holly. All right, then, I guess I would ask the three of us to vote on Holly's motion that we authorize the town administrator or planner to pick a peer review person quickly as they're able and coordinate with these, the applicants. So we're all on the same page. It's been collaborative and cooperative up until now, and I want it to continue that way.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I don't know anybody who doesn't want that.
Thank you.
And I don't know what this will cost you, if it's below any of your costs or however it is, but it seems like that's what we would like to do on advice of our consultant. So any other discussion? Yes?
I have a question. It's possible that we will also be required to have peer review through the notice of intent process for civil and stormwater. Could the peer reviewer provide both reviews?
I couldn't totally hear you, I'm sorry.
She wants to make sure that the peer reviewer for the notice of intent is the same as the peer reviewer that you use, which I generally recommend. So if you also want to consult with the Conservation Commission as to who they would typically use.
Makes a lot of sense.
Because the last thing you want is to have two separate peer review consultants offering different comments and potential conflict between those comments, and then the applicant is put in an untenable position where they can't resolve both.
We'll coordinate on Tuesday when you're in front of the Conservation Commission.
Right.
So all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, we just do have to choose a date, giving enough time for the peer review stuff and so we can be here. I'll pull out calendars, I got one here somewhere.
And Brian, will you, can you pull up the budget calendar just for December to make sure it's not on the same night as the budget stuff?
Stand by.
I don't think I have a copy of that. I think I left that at home. Yeah, that's with cemetery.
Start it. So if you're looking, the first week of December, the 4th, there's budget meetings.
Yeah, that's right.
So I would avoid the 4th. That's a Thursday, so either Wednesday, the 3rd...
I'm available on the 3rd.
As long as I'm, as long as my flight comes in. As long as my flight comes in, I'll be here on the 3rd. Seven o'clock again, or Dan?
Wednesday, the 3rd. Sounds fine to me, 7:00 PM. So I'd like a motion to, unless there's something else somebody would like to say, that we recess this meeting until December 3rd at 7:00 PM.
We continue, yeah. Second.
I guess that was the motion.
Yeah, I considered a motion.
All right. Any other discussion about that? All in favor?
All right, is that all right with you, Craig?
Yes.
Okay.
Can we do the minutes before we totally adjourn now?
Absolutely. Well, we can, before we finish our recess, what have you got for people? Thank you very much.
Brian handed them out.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Of course, now I've lost them, but...
No, it was simply...
It was the one for the night, for the first meeting, October 6th. I handed them out. Okay, there.
There's one here.
Yeah. Well, I gave one to each of all four of us.
So there was one right here.
That one must be yours.
I assume that was mine.
Yeah, I put one by each person's name.
Okay. Well, I've got mine shuffled in somewhere here.
Okay. Here, I'll let you list mine.
Thank you, Holly.
That way I can sign them and give them to Brian tonight so that he can do whatever it is he does with them.
Get them filed on the website.
Right.
Is there a...
The third or the fourth?
The 3rd.
Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Second. Dennis, we second that? I'll second that, all right. Any other discussion? All in favor of the minutes? Aye, aye. Okay with you, Dennis?
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Just so I'm clear.
Can I have that though, because I need to sign it.
I'm sorry.
And give it to Brian.
I can't make motions or present motions.
You're right.
Okay. I assume that, but I just wanted to clarify. Because I'm just here listening and...
Well, actually, is that true though? Is that true that Craig can't make anything to do with this project?
This particular project.
But he can make, he can weigh in on other things like motions and minutes?
Well, I can second motions or make motions.
Right now, on this project, because Dennis has been activated, just on this project, but any other matter...
Right.
Right.
But I'm saying on this project.
Right.
I'm an observer.
But like, for the minutes, you could have made the motion to accept them.
Oh, okay, because it was...
I mean, you were, she probably read them and went, huh?
That business. I got it.
We'll tease this out.
Yeah, it's a little confusing.
Thank you.
I think our consultant, just to say, I don't know where he came from, but I guess he was a herd.
I think he said Rutland. Yeah, he's got an hour ride.
Yeah. Me, I'd have been happy when he asked the last question, it took half an hour, but...
Nothing. What is this for? Sometimes we don't have the board...
So you're going to be at the school next week?
Yeah.
Everybody's...